I would like to call to order the March 27, 2024 city council meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the rule?
Carrie.
Present.
Chilson.
Present.
Hutchings.
Here.
Nelson.
Present.
Parker.
Present.
Whackler.
Here.
Cassidy.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Kerry is on Zoom. Sorry, Mayor Whitney is on Zoom. It's old, old habits, sir.
I'll remember that one.
Welcome, Mayor Whitney. So we are on item two, approval of the agenda and consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda? Thank you, Councilmember Kerry.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. I, at this time, would like to pass the gavel to Councilmember Chilson.
Yep, there we go.
You. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda at this time? Okay, please go ahead.
Mr. Chilson, I would, I would like to declare a potential conflict of interest with Resolution 2024-008 and request a ruling. I am, I am working and have submitted a grant application to Housing Alaskans on behalf of a project that potentially could be underway here in the city of Soldatna.
Just seeking clarity on that, you don't personally have any financial benefit that you would stand to gain with that, would you?
I am doing contract work and am being paid for the work that I'm being done.
Okay, that being the case, I would acknowledge a conflict on that and you would be recusing yourself from participating in the vote on that consent agenda item.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I will return the gavel. Thank you.
Are there any other changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Councilmember Hutchings.
I would like to declare a conflict, like, conflict on Resolution 2024-008. I am part of an organization that has filed with Housing Alaskans for a grant. And even though it doesn't, it's a nonprofit of 501(c)(3), I do not get paid, but I think I need to clarify that I'm involved in that organization.
Thank you, Councilmember Hutchings. Based on that, I would declare that, yes, you would have a conflict of interest in that case. And should this require a vote, you would also abstain from voting. Any other changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Seeing none, would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
February 28, 2024, council meeting minutes. Ordinance 2024-008, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $26,657 in the airport fund and $426,507 in the Airport Improvements Capital Project Fund for construction administration and inspection efforts on the 2019 Runway Rehabilitation Project, sponsored by the City Manager Public Hearing on April 10. Ordinance 2024-009, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $14,079 in the airport fund and $14,079 in the Airport Improvements Capital Project Fund for the 2019 Runway Rehabilitation Project, sponsored by the City Manager Public Hearing on April 10. Ordinance 2024-010, amending Section 17.10.130, Definitions 17.10.265 Commercial District and 17.10.335 Landscaping to clarify and provide consistency with standards in Soldatna Municipal Code, sponsored by the City Manager Public Hearing on April 10. Ordinance 2024-011, approving a donation to the Soldatna Little League and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $50,000 in the general fund for this purpose, sponsored by the Mayor Public Hearing on April 10, 2024. Ordinance 2024-012, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $125,000 in the general fund and $125,000 in the Parks and Recreation Capital Project Fund for consultant services to implement the Soldatna Riverfront Redevelopment Project, Riverfront Redevelopment Plan, sponsored by the City Manager Public Hearing on April 10, 2024. Ordinance 2024-013, amending Soldatna Municipal Code, Section 2.28.100 Holidays, sponsored by the City Manager Public Hearing on April 10. Ordinance 2024-014, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $24,000 in the Homeland Security Grant Fund for a grant received from the State of Alaska Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for Cybersecurity Risk Assessment, sponsored by the City Manager Public Hearing on April 10. Ordinance 2024-015, adopting Soldatna Municipal Code, Chapter 13.22, Changing Tables in City Facilities, sponsored by Councilmember Chilson, Public Hearing on April 10. Resolution 2024-008, supporting a $10 million legislative appropriation to Housing Alaskans, a public-private partnership, sponsored by Chilson. Action Memorandum 2024-007, request for an excused absence from the May 8, 2024 regular council meeting, sponsored by Parker. Action Memorandum 2024-008, rescheduling the December 11, 2024 regular council meeting to December 18, 2024. That is your consent agenda.
Thank, thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your phone. Do we have anybody on Zoom? I see no one here in chambers. Are there any council objections to approving the agenda and consent agenda? Hearing none, the agenda and consent agenda are approved. Councilmember Kerry, before us, we have a mayoral declaration declaring April 24 as month of military child and April 12, 2024 as Purple Up Day. If you please, Councilmember Kerry would read this proclamation. Yes, no, not at all. We would love to have them.
I'll read it as it's intended, because I, Mayor, say, but I'm going to say on behalf of. So the proclamation itself, please, me. I'm very pleased that the mayor allows me to read this. As a son of someone killed in that, who was in military, in his military family, I very much understand. Proclamation. Whereas our military families help sustain our fighting force, it is important to emphasize and recognize the critical role of their dependents while their parents serve our nations. And whereas the Alaska National Guard Child and Youth Programs, Youth Council is committed to resolving the educational transition issues that are faced by these children and their families. And whereas the average military student faces transition challenges more than twice during high school, and most military children will attend six to nine different school systems throughout their lives from kindergarten to 12th grade. And whereas in 1986, former Defense Secretary Catherine Weinberg designated the month of April as the month of the military child. And whereas April 12, 2024, Purple Up Day, has been dedicated to supporting military youth throughout the United States and territories. Now therefore, on behalf of Paul Whitney, Mayor of the City of Soldatna, does hereby proclaim April 2024 as month of the military child and April 12, 2024 as Purple Up Day in the City of Soldatna and in recognition of everyone.
Show appreciation, support, and understanding for the military children in our communities. All residents are encouraged to wear purple on April 12, 2024, the color symbolizing all branches of the military as a visible show of support and appreciation for military children. This is dated 27 March, 2024. Thank you.
You want to go? Would you like to join us?
Lovely, whatever, wherever they tell me.
Right in the center. Oh, wonderful. Turn it around. There we go. Thank you.
Good, good.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Kerry. We have a second mayoral proclamation declaring April 24 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Are there representatives from the Leashore Center here tonight? If you would come forth, please.
Hi, good to see you. Whereas sexual assault is an intolerable violent crime with public health implications for every person in the Central Kenai Peninsula, and no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault alone. And whereas sexual violence prevention can be better addressed through education, counseling, support of victims and survivors, and increased support for service agencies in collaboration with the Leashore Center. And whereas the Leashore Center, its staff and volunteers work around to address sexual assault by providing 24-hour crisis services, offering support to those impacted by sexual assault, and providing prevention, education, and survivor empowerment information to schools, churches, and civic organizations, as well as to medical, mental health, law enforcement, education, and criminal justice personnel. And whereas the Leashore Center continues to develop and improve the quality of service for those most profoundly and directly impacted by sexual violence. Now therefore, on behalf of Paul Whitney, Mayor of the City of Soldatna, we do hereby proclaim April 24 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Soldatna and urge all citizens to assert, support, and assist the Leashore Center as it continues its efforts to bring real hope for freeing the Central Kenai Peninsula from the tragedy of sexual violence and exploitation, dated this 27th day of March, 2024.
And in support of that, the Leashore Center did have a respect walk in Kenai today. About 40 people from both the Public Defender's Office, law enforcement personnel, and members of the community showed up to show respect and support the Leashore Center. So, thank you for the work that you guys do. Which brings us down to item four, presentations with prior notice. We have one this evening. That is Jody Stewart with Central Area Rural Transit to provide us with an update. Jody?
So I am only here to introduce. So although I, I'm a common face in front of you guys, I want to say thank you again for allowing me to come and introduce you to someone that I believe is going to be instrumental in the changes of Central Area Rural Transit System. So in 1998, there was an idea. Then in 2000, Central Area Rural Transit System was formed. 24 years later, we're here and we're still providing public transportation. In an effort to continue the evolution of this nonprofit, I am very happy to introduce to you our new executive director, Jessica Schultz. She's been the acting executive director since the end of November of last year, and she agreed to lead our organization in February of this year. Jessica is a lifelong Soldatna resident. Growing up surrounded by the beauty of Alaska, she's developed a deep appreciation for all of our outdoor activities, and that includes spending time outdoors with her family and creating lasting memories together. In 2012, she embarked on a professional journey that led her to the Central Area Rural Transit System, and she's dedicated the last 12 years to this career. She's grown, she's thrived in this role, and she has contributed significantly to the success that we are seeing today. In 2023, she received a significant milestone in her academic journey when she received her Bachelor of Arts degree in elementary education, and yet we're still very lucky to have her. So I would like to say she, she does so much. And in addition to her day-to-day, she volunteers with her children's school. She is an active outreach volunteer for the Multiple Sclerosis Foundation, and she is here to give you the very first update on Central Area Rural Transit System that I think the City of Soldatna has seen in a while. So please help me welcome Jessica Schultz as our executive director and today's speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm sure many of you are aware of the services that Karts provides to the community, but for those of you who don't, here's just a brief overview. Perfect. Karts provides door-to-door transportation on the Central Kenai Peninsula by advance reservation. We deliver rides Monday through Friday, 24 hours a day, and customers are charged by the amount of zones that they travel through to get to their destination. They're charged anywhere from about $2.50 to $15 one-way. We have 14 employees and eight dedicated vehicles. Any other rides that were not able to accommodate on our vehicles, we send over to our contractor, Alaska Cab. And since forming in 2001, we have delivered just under 1 million rides. Next slide, perfect. 2023 was a great year for ridership with a grand total of delivered rides coming in at almost 30,000 trips. 63% of our trips were for work-related purposes. Other, the other portion is for people going to support services, medical, shopping, and recreational. The City of Kenai was the most popular destination with 30% of our rides being delivered there. However, the City of Soldatna was next in line at about 23%. Almost 40% of our trips were delivered in the outlined cities of Sterling, Bunny River, Casilloff, and Nikiski. This really defines the importance of Karts' broad service area. This huge population of people would not be able to access services within the cities without Karts. The top eight most visited stops in 2023 inside the City of Soldatna were the hospital, the library, Serenity House, Fred Meyer's Safeway, BCHS, Walgreens, and Aspen Assisted Creek. Karts ridership over the last six years has continued to increase with a slight dip in 2020 due to COVID. However, Karts was considered an essential service, so with incredible assistance of our contractor, we were able to continue to provide transportation. Our on-time performance has significantly improved throughout 2023 with an even better projection for 2024. There's a list of several upgrades and factors that assisted in improving on-time performance, some of which included expanding our vehicle inventory, real-time tracking and trip logging, enhanced vehicle preventative maintenance, and upgrading the communication equipment. However, I feel the biggest contributing factor is the increase in vehicle operators and staff. Staffing at Karts is an issue of the past, thankfully. Right now, we have a great team that stays very busy. We have an operations manager who oversees the day-to-day operations and assists the operation staff. We have two customer service reps who assist customers with ride reservations. We have a billing coordinator. We have a lead driver who does all of our driver training and small in-house vehicle repairs. And then on top of our lead driver, we have eight full-time drivers working around the clock from about 3:30 in the morning until well after midnight. 71% of our funding comes from federal dollars. The remaining 29% comes from customer fares, state, and local agency contributions. In order for Karts to draw down our full potential of federal dollars, we need to secure additional match. For example, the diagram on the right shows that if Karts receives $50,000 of match, we can leverage an additional $66,000 at the very least of federal dollars. And in the end, we're able to turn $50,000 into $116,000. While $50,000 is less than 5% of our operating budget, it plays a substantial role in the funding puzzle. As you can see, the graph shows a steady increase in the number of rides since January 2023. Karts delivered 1,100 more trips in January this year versus last year. And although February data wasn't included when I created this, it was equally the same, about 1,100 more trips this year than last year. Between increased Medicaid trips, new customer sign-ups, and agency partnerships, Karts is projecting a 25% increase in ridership for fiscal year '25. Karts conducted a five-year transportation plan to work towards expansion. However, shortly after the plan was finalized, we were hit with a pandemic. During the pandemic, there were many unknowns, and unfortunately, staffing issues hindered our ability to expand. The first thing we'd like to expand on is opening weekend service on the Central Peninsula. This is an ongoing complaint from current Karts users. Many of our riders don't work the normal Monday through Friday nine-to-five jobs. Keeping in mind that 63% of our users are using Karts for work-related purposes. In addition to weekend service, Karts would like to expand to the cities of Homer and Seward. The board and I are well aware that transportation is needed in both Seward and Homer. We'd like to help fill the gaps by having a presence in both cities. However, in order for Karts to expand, we need to secure local match source. This is our growing list of community partnerships. I recognize the need and importance of community partnerships, and I've hit the ground running trying to build connections within our community. Karts participated in Project Homeless Connect and delivered free transportation to individuals attending. We'll also be participating in the sports show in May, offering a free shuttle to people attending. And in addition to that, Karts applied for the Kenai Peninsula Borough Opioid Settlement Grant to hopefully be able to provide free transportation to individuals with substance abuse and mental health problems. I would also like to personally thank Mayor Whitney for his generous and thoughtful letter of support. And lastly, Karts board members. We have seven amazing board members, some of which are here tonight. I would just like to add that the board has been fundamental in recent staffing and policy changes, which has allowed Karts to move forward in a positive manner. Everyone on our board cares about the community and recognizes the importance that Karts plays in the community. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz, for the presentation. Comments from, questions from council members? I don't see any, so thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. And originally, Alaska Christian College was going And originally, Alaska Christian College was going to provide us with an update, but they have rescheduled to our meeting in April 24th. Brings us down to item five, public comments and presentations. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Yes, ma'am. Please come forth, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name's Tamara Miller, 46523 Blue Shadow Court, Saldana. I've been here a couple times. I'm here representing Kenai Peninsula Hockey Association. I'm on the board of directors, and I'm here as a parent of a youth hockey player. We are trying to get the Parks and Recs Department to agree to put in the ice at the Saldana Regional Sports Complex for at least the month of July. That's an additional four weeks, because they're already planning to put it in August. We're not really making any headway. We've been here a couple times requesting this. To my knowledge, it's not been put on an agenda. It's not been any special meetings. I've not been invited to any special meetings. I don't know who's making the decisions, but we would like the city council and city manager to please take us seriously. We're a big user group of this facility, and we have a sincere need of the ice this summer. And I'm just gonna read what I wrote, because it'll make a little more sense probably than me rambling. So, I'm the parent of two college hockey players and a youth player. And in the summer, for my college players, they, in the past, haven't had any ice, at least for the last year, to skate in the summer. So, that puts them at a significant disadvantage when they go back to school in the fall, because all their other teammates are skating during the summer. So, my girls had to drive to Anchorage every single week to get at least one skate-in a week. As far as the youth go, as I've stated before, in Alaska, youth comp or competitive hockey starts in August. The tryouts are in August, and therefore, if you don't skate for four or five months, and then you just show up to try out, you're not going to perform very well. And so, the way some parents handle that situation is they go out of town. They go to Anchorage, they go to the valley, they go out of state, if they can afford that, or if that's in their plan. But a lot of us can't do that. We work, we have other things that we're doing in the summer, and it's very hard to get out of town, and it's just shameful that we have a rink right up the road that we can't use. So, I said I was gonna read this, and then I didn't read it. So, for the college kids in the area, for the youth in the area, I really believe that getting the ice in is important, and I know there are some financial issues, and I ask that the council help Parks and Rec take care of those issues. I know, I just read, heard you guys say you're giving fifty thousand to Little League, and money to this, and money to that. And if you talk to Mr. Todd, we're probably talking less than $50,000 needed to make this happen when it's, when it comes down to money. So, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to testify? If you would state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Hello, my name's Keegan Keel, 404 Lawton, Kenai, 99611. So, I'm also here representing my children, the team that I coach, which is the U-12 team at KPHA, and I'm also a board member. I'll just touch on the necessity portion of, that Tamara was talking to. But, but in this community, we have a very talented set of youth hockey players that are very, very passionate. I guess I'll just recap on our season. So, last year, we had a couple days of ice, we then had tryouts. After tryouts, the ice was then again taken out for a week for a pre-planned event at the sports center. And we happily let that event happen and practiced off-ice, did those things. We then went to our first tournament in October, where I believe we lost all three games with a, with a group of heartbroken kids. And then fast-forwarding to the end of the season, we finished third in state. The team going back to October, the teams that beat us were teams that had been skating all summer long. And that's, that's one of the reasons I feel like it's, it's a huge necessity. I just feel like the kids will continue to go through this until it's no longer possible to catch up in the end. I know this is something that, I grew up playing hockey here, and, and it was something that I was, I was awarded, was be able to skate all summer long without having to travel. And I guess that's, that's all I really have, but thanks for your guys' time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience? Thank you. Name and address, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Tim asked up, 36982 Midway Drive, Sterling, 99672. And I'm here with, on behalf of KPHA. I'm a coach, got four kids that play. Very important for our community and our youth, you know, to have, because like baseball season, that's so short. Hockey season's so long, well, we live in Alaska. Every time we talk to people down in the Lower Forty-Eight, they just laugh that we don't have ice. You know, Fairbanks has ice, the valley has ice, Anchorage obviously has ice. And they're, they're, they're good. We're right there, but we're not there yet, because they have it all year long. And I don't think it's that, I know it's all money, but I think that we can put money where it needs to go to, you know, entertain what we need. Because honestly, I mean, we're not from here. You know, I got four kids, we own a thriving business here, and like, me and my wife, I mean, we would consider moving, you know, taking our family somewhere else, to Fairbanks or, I don't want to go to Anchorage, but I'd go to Fairbanks, because they have four rinks in that small town. We're Alaskans. There's a lot of hockey players here, you know? And it's, I mean, it's very, very important to us and our families, and I'm surprised there's not many there, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. I got you back there.
Hello. My name is Jen Holco, 354 West Riverview Avenue, Saldana, so just down the road here. Same with a group of hockey parents, I'm representing KPHA. I kind of just put a money thing together earlier today, was just putting together numbers from last summer. I guess I should start with, I have three children, two of them play hockey, my third wants to start this fall, Lord help me. But my older two play double-A level comp hockey, which is the higher travel league, the higher competitive level, where we compete with the best teams in the state and out-of-state, or try to. But last summer, just, just alone between my two boys, I booked five weeks of camp for them. We had nothing offered here, because usually the Kenai rink was open at one point, and that stopped. So, we had no summer ice. My totals between, you know, the, the hockey camp costs, which is like the ice and the instruction fees, and then the lodging and the food, just paying for that out of town, it was $10,900, which actually, I almost threw up in my mouth. It feels like I can't believe I spend that much in hockey, but I did, and I do, because that's my kid's sport. It's their favorite thing. We do baseball, we do soccer, hockey, comp hockey is their thing. So, if they want to expand and have training in the summer to be able to compete come August, when all the other teams are making tryouts and doing their comp teams, we have to send them out of town. So, I did two weeks in Anchorage, one week in Eagle River, one week in Palmer, and one week out of state between my two boys last summer, for about eleven grand. I would love to keep that money in the community. I would love to bring money like that to the community. I mean, my folks, for example, they are vendors at the Wednesday market, right? Like, I would love to have a hockey family come down for camp for the week, so the family's camping at the rink, the son's doing hockey camp, the dad's out fishing the Kenai, the mom's, whatever, is out shopping at the Saldana, or at the Wednesday market, because that's what I do when I'm out of town. I'm just kind of sitting there waiting by the rink, blowing money that I don't have, but I, you know, we find it somewhere, whatever. But, yeah, so just, I thought maybe a money perspective, like I'm a single mom and blew eleven grand last summer out of town, and it's, it's a lot of money. So, I think we would bring, we would keep a lot of money in the community, number one. We would bring a lot of money in if we're offering camps up to out-of-towners. I know we have a huge group, hockey group in Homer. They also do not have summer ice. They would love to come up to Saldana somewhere close to them and have summer ice opportunity. So, there'd be a lot of local investment, I think, if we did have ice. Thank you.
Sir.
Good evening. My name's Kyle Coleman, 47465 Wispen, Kenai, Alaska. I'm here also to advocate the chat with these families here. Youth hockey coach, my first year of coaching, but played competitively for about fifteen years. Took a little break after high school, wanted to, you know, get into school and start the job thing. But to add to Jen's point, it's my first year of coaching, my boy's first year in hockey, I've spent three grand already for this summer, and that is not hotel, not food, nothing. That's three camps in Anchorage and the valley. Also, to build on what Jen said, we used to have camps back here in the early 2000s. We had big-name professional players come down here, put on camps, brought kids from all over the state out here, July. What do we do in July? Fish, right? What do you do? What happens with the sports center parking lot? Loads up with campers, right? There's world-famous Kenai River right there. That brings all that money into the peninsula. We were very fortunate in the 2000s to have ice. Our kids now, like you were saying, dude, I'm getting emotional. They don't have that ability like they used to. 2004, I was on a team that went to a national championship from KPHA, because they had summer ice. Our coach put us in that situation, doing this right here. I want my kids, Keegan's kids, Jen's kids, to all feel that same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else come, thank you, ma'am.
Sarah Miller, 39846 Bubba's Avenue in Saldana. I was here, I think it was last month, with my son Will, and he spoke. And so, I'm just here again to reiterate our request that the city council consider laying ice in the sports center, at least for the month of July. I think that would add really only three weeks to the calendar compared to how much ice was used last year, which probably wouldn't add a significant amount of structural damage to the sports center, which I know is a concern that Joel expressed in the report that I just read. But it seems like three weeks is not gonna do as much damage to the building as potentially leaving ice in there all year round might. So, while I understand that's a concern, it's also probably something that can be alleviated at least for this summer, for the three weeks. I think he mentioned too that it potentially complicates the, his ability to cover that for staffing needs, but I'm also pretty confident that he can solve that problem. That's part of the duties of his job, and I think that he would be able to do that, knowing that he had the support of the city council for those efforts. Scheduling conflicts for dryland events, such as the 4H, yeah, that requires extra time and activity to accommodate both of those events, but bringing livestock into the sports center also takes a lot of effort, and, because the city wasn't, or the facility wasn't designed for that in the first place, but they found a way to make it work. So, I think that just demonstrates that solutions can be found for things that seem really hard. So, I'm hoping that putting an extra month of ice in is one of those things. As Jen mentioned, KPHA members are spending thousands of dollars every summer for ice for their kids. Most of, all of that is going elsewhere, out of state, but also in, in-state to camps in Anchorage and Eagle River and up in the valley. And I know you've heard this, but I'll just say it again, we would prefer to be spending that kind of money at home, and I'm sure that the city would prefer to be bringing that kind of money in. I would cancel the week that I've already booked for my son to go up to Eagle River at the end of July, if it meant that we were gonna have the ice here at home. Last summer, KPHA booked the ice that you guys laid in July, and it got used, so it's not gonna be a wasted effort. And then finally, just the commitment, and I hope that you're hearing the meaning that hockey has to the kids in this community, the families, our coaches, and how important that is to them. We want to see our program be successful, but in order to have that happen, we need to have the facility. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there, is there anyone else here in chambers who would like to testify on items not on the agenda? Is there anyone online? We give them a minute in case they forgot to raise their hands.
Ms. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Rather than replying back to each individual commenter, would it be possible to make the comment at the end of this?
Yes.
Just in response, thank you.
Yeah. I just want everybody to have the opportunity to offer a comment. So, seeing nobody else that wishes to offer comments, I bring it back to council members for comments. Councilman Chilton?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First of all, I appreciate everyone coming out tonight to voice their support for this. I know this is an issue that people are very passionate about, and rightfully so. It's, it's an important aspect of our community. You know, I heard a lot of really good feedback tonight, and a couple points on those, you know, there was one mention that we are, we're not listening or not taking this seriously. And that's not the case. This is something that we do care about. You know, I can't speak for the entire council, but I think it's pretty safe to say that we support our hockey community, we want to see ice and, and the sports center if at all possible. It just comes down to, you know, a number of logistics. There's, there's a number of pieces at play here, unfortunately. It's, it's not just a money issue, it's not as simple as just throwing dollars at it and solving it. There's, there's logistical issues with the, the equipment to support the ice operations in the summer, humidity with that. And I, I might ask our city manager here in a minute to provide an update on that, but I do know that our Parks Director is looking into this, and if at all possible, I think we will see ice this summer. It's just a question of whether or not we can do it logistically, and then there's also the problem of staffing. Our Parks Department is stretched incredibly thin during the summer months, and they have been very short-staffed in the last year or two. And it's not a matter of just throwing money to hire additional people, it's just they can't find people to fill these positions. I was very appreciative when we had the presentation from 4H at our last meeting, or maybe it was the Parks and Rec, what I'm thinking of, where they had offered graciously to come in and provide bodies to help out, and it was great seeing organizations willing to support fellow organizations, the community. But even if it was, even if we had all the volunteers we wanted, we still need Parks and Rec staff that can oversee that, know how the operation works, to put down all the flooring, and that's just a really difficult pain point for us. You know, since Kenai closed their ice in the summer, we've made efforts to try to make this work. We didn't used to have ice in August. We did do that, because we want our kids to be able to stay local to do their tryouts, and I get the need that we want to further extend that, so they can have the ability to train leading into those tryouts, and we are exploring that. I just don't know if it's actually possible, and I know that the city manager's report is not till later in the, in the agenda, but with the permission of the Vice Mayor, I would request that maybe this could be spoken to at this point, so that we don't have to have everyone here waiting around to get to that point in the agenda, and maybe you'd be able to provide a brief update on where we are and some of those, speak to some of the logistical barriers that we're dealing with. And again, it's not just a dollar issue of just throwing money at the problem, like we, we have issues that we have to work through, and they are being investigated. But I would again remind you that we have the fieldhouse being built. You know, I was just over there this afternoon, there's tractors that are clearing land. It's very exciting to see this project finally happening, and once that's built, just bear with us a little bit longer, I think we're gonna see opportunity to run that ice year round and, and not conflict with other operations there, because we'll have dual venues. So, I wouldn't rule, rule it out as, as being impossible for the summer, we're looking into it. I think we fully support it if at all possible, but worst-case scenario, if we can't make it happen this summer... But worst-case scenario, if we can't make it happen this summer, just bear with us a little bit longer, and we will try to see what we can do when that building is opened up. So I'm gonna turn it over to city manager with the permission of Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Chilson. Um, City Manager Bauer?
Thank you. Um, the Parks and Rec Director, Joel Todd, is, um, ill this evening. However, he is on via Zoom and has been listening in, and he's provided a memo. And so I will actually turn it over to speak, have him speak momentarily. I do wanna say that, yes, we've heard you, and it honestly is my desire, and Joel is aware of this, to have year-round ice because I think that it will be used by the hockey community as well as others. So it is our desire. Um, this year, um, is very tough for us. Um, as you've heard, the field house is opening next year. I, um, we need more time to make this happen, and we want to, um, have it happen next year when the field house is open or almost open at that point. So with that, I'd like to, um, have Joel, he has an update in the packet, and then he, um, an update, further update about the refrigeration in HVAC systems.
Um, Mr. Todd, do you have a voice?
Joel, we can't hear you if you're talking.
There you go. We can see you're not on mute anymore, but we don't hear you. Hello?
Madam Vice Mayor, I could call him and put him on speakerphone if we're not able to connect through here.
Sure.
Joel, I'm gonna call you.
And if you have not, those in, uh, the chambers here, there is on the council packet a, a memo from, from Mr. Todd that goes through, um, the issues and talks about the refrigeration and HVAC system. We did have someone. So, um, a, a report from the engineering firm looking at our refrigeration system because it is older than some people in the room here. Um, and, uh, as, as we age, things, things need repairs and fixing, and they don't always function the way they're, they were supposed to when they were first installed. So, um, we may have an update from Mr. Todd on that.
Madam Vice Mayor, I'm gonna put him on speaker. I'm hoping we don't get too much feedback through there, but we'll try. All right, Joel, you are on speakerphone, and I'm putting you through the microphone, hoping this will work.
Okay, can you hear me?
Can everyone hear? Okay.
All right, sorry about the audio issues. Um, I just turned my volume down so I won't be able to hear any answers or questions to me. But I just wanted to give you an update. Um, you know, and I apologize for being sick and not being able to be there in person tonight. Um, we, we have been looking at summer ice for, for multiple years. As, as we all know, Kenai's rink was no longer able to offer summer ice. Couple of years ago, we were approached by them, um, wondering if Soldatna could pick up that. We decided at that time we could probably do August, um, to at least have the tryouts down here. Uh, we did that last year with some success. Um, I think it was, it was okay for all the different user groups, for, for the dry events, for the hockey community, and, and for the staff. It wasn't great for anybody. Um, but we were able to at least be able to offer ice during, uh, August and September, uh, for those tryouts. Looking towards this coming summer, you know, like, we, we've, like you've seen in the packet, and like we've talked before, there's a few, few issues that we're up against. Um, not just focusing on the issues, I, I, I do wanna speak to all the KPHA supporters in the, in the audience tonight and, and that have written in and called in and talked to, talked to me directly. We get it. We, we understand the difficulties of, of rolling into a tryout without having any practice time on the ice. That's not ideal. Um, we're not against that. We, you know, we, we support what you guys are asking. The hard part is trying to support the hockey community and all of the other user groups in our community in July. Um, and at this time, um, staffing is an issue because it does take, last year it took two full-time staff members to operate that facility, um, that, that were removed from our summer operation. So that means less, less campground support, less gardening and flower support, less big event support. Um, and we did see a decrease in quality, um, in maintenance and, and operations due to that. Um, I think there's also an additional cost, obviously, the staffing cost, the, the utility cost, the maintenance cost. Um, our ice price, uh, during the summer was, I think, two-ten. Anchorage is in the 400 range. Um, we do not cover our operating costs with that, with that ice price. Um, we, we basically cover our, our electricity bill so that doesn't come into account, uh, staffing and administrative costs. I think the large events we've, we've talked about over and over again. Um, we've, we're building a field house specifically designed to host these big events so that we can move them off of the rink. It is my desire and my staff's desire to not have to put down this flooring ever again. Um, it is not ideal. It's very time-consuming, um, and physically taxing. Um, and so I think in a year, like, uh, City Manager Bauer said, when the field house opens up, that's gonna free open a lot of, of space in the existing ice rink for, for ice only. And then the refrigeration, um, we, we're currently running our original refrigeration system, 1983. It was installed, and we still are operating the same system. Typically, this, uh, life expectancy is about 30 years. We're at 40. We did have three engineers come to visit us last week, the refrigeration, mechanical, and electrical engineers, to take a look at our system, and they're, they will give us a report in probably about two months, is what they estimated, on recommendations for, uh, where we should go and when, and how, um, we're currently using our 22 Freon, which is no longer being produced. Um, many rinks in Anchorage and Fairbanks and around the nation have gone to either ammonia or CO2. There's a lot of pros and cons to both systems, um, and different costs associated with them. Um, and so hopefully this report will, will give us the, the guidance to make good decisions today and in the future. Uh, we specifically spoke and, and dapped about the summer ice, um, needs. We do not have a humidification system installed currently. That is a, a substantial cost. It's not insurmountable. Uh, but they're also gonna sort of dive into that and, and figure out what, what the suggested, um, system could be, if it's needed, if not needed, um, what are the recommendations? We, we've seen in other rinks that don't have this, that have operated year-round, and it, it definitely, uh, shortens the lifespan of the facility. So that's something we're looking into. We're, you know, we're kinda looking underneath every rock and, and logged to see what sort of options are out there. Um, a lot of, you know, a lot of this is pointing towards next year. Uh, but I did talk to Tammy a couple of weeks ago through, through email. And just, you know, I wanna reiterate, we're, we, we want to provide an opportunity for our, our ice community in the summertime. Um, there's some hurdles that we're not sure we can jump over right now. But, you know, we wanna sort of do our due diligence and make sure that, you know, can, can we do it? Should we do it? And what's the best timeline for that?
Thank you, Joel.
So Joel cannot hear questions from us, is that correct?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. So you said the report from the engineers will be in about two months? So.
Correct.
Uh, late, late May?
Sorry, what's that?
Late, late May?
Yes, he, I asked how fast, and he said two months, uh, maybe a little sooner than that if possible. But, um, typically it's two months.
Okay. Does any council members have any questions for Mr. Todd? Mr. Chilson?
I guess my only follow-up being is, uh, uh, Mr. Todd had made a couple of comments about costs being barriers to this. Uh, my understanding prior to this was there's just a lot of logistical barriers that cost and, like, cost necessarily, that was not necessarily the only barrier. So I guess my follow-up question would be, let's, let's assume we just wrote a blank check to the Parks Department. Is, is money really the only issue here? My, my takeaway is that there are still things that we had to work through to resolve that money is not going to fix. Could you speak to that?
Um, yes. So I, I did some rough estimates from that, and I did not get my numbers approved through the finance department. Um, but I, I think it would cost probably about $33,000 to $40,000 a month to provide ice in the summer. And that's just electricity and staffing, um, not maintenance, repairs, administrative, all the other stuff. And looking at last year's numbers, we probably brought in about $21,000 to $29,000 per month in ice rental fees. Um, so there is a gap in just, um, you know, just those numbers, um, which isn't insurmountable. Like, um, you know, it's, it's, it's not drastic. I think in addition to that is, is the removal of full-time staff into the ice maintenance, uh, operation. I think that, that is also a cost, um, when you look at, you know, being able to provide less, uh, support to our summer operation, specifically in July. As everybody knows, there's a lot of people here, and there's a lot of things that are break. And the Parks Department is out and about 24 hours a day, seven days a week, trying to make our community, you know, look good, uh, for these visitors and, and for, you know, our residents. And so if I take multiple staff out of my operation, that's, you know, I, I have to fill the gap somewhere. Or I have to take them, you know, I just have to be okay with doing less. Uh, so there's, and then as far as the, the other logistics, the events, we did, um, we did work with the 4H community this year to move their event out of August. And this would allow us to only have to put down the flooring once, um, instead of twice. And, and it would free up an extra week of ice for, for our hockey community. This was not an easy ask. Um, if you've ever raised 4H animals, like you, there's a timeline of when you're able to get, you know, baby cows and lambs and chickens and pigs. And we're asking, uh, the breeders to provide, uh, you know, these animals a couple of weeks earlier than everybody else in the state. Um, so they were willing to do it because they, you know, they, the value of being in Soldatna and, and at our facility was important. Um, they also teamed up with the Progress Day Parade, um, and, and the rodeo that happens during that event. Um, and so they're willing to move to get out of August to help the hockey community, um, and still be able to, you know, have a facility in the Soldatna area, which they find a great value in. Um, so I think, uh, to Mr. Chilson's point, yes, there is a, a dollar amount, but there's also a few other things that are kind of out there.
Thank you.
Any, any, Mr. Carey?
Good to see you, manager. Um, I feel I'm hearing a contradiction in that pretty consistently in discussion, I've heard that the issue is not finance. And yet here, just a few seconds ago, um, I heard you would take staff out of the organization that's needed to do other things during the summer. Um, uh, if the council provided, uh, additional, uh, finance, would this problem be alleviated?
Before Mr. Todd answers, um, it, it, Joel, uh, please correct me if I'm wrong. Last year, we were down five in your department, and, um, we've started the recruitment process at, at this time, but we're also aware that, that we could be down that number as well this year. And so that is, in addition to moving people from where their normal, um, duties are, we didn't have the people to move. And so that, having then the ice created that additional issue. Is that correct? That we're down five, Joel?
Yeah, last summer, we were unable to fill five summer seasonal positions, um, which is about, I think, 20% of my crew. And this isn't just our local problems, the national, uh, struggle. So.
I don't know if I answered your question, but, um, as far as staffing, that is a big issue for us. And that, that is my concern. And like I said, um, my desire is year-round ice, um, and to get to the staffing level that we need to be at. Um, previously during the discussion regarding the field house, when we provided the update, staffing was added to that with the projected costs so that, um, we could have the ice. We just don't have the staffing at this time. And I know that it's been stated that that's easy to overcome, but it's really not easy to overcome at these days. It just isn't. And, um, we'll, we'll try. I mean, we will definitely try to recruit and to fill the positions, but we just don't have the bodies.
Any other comments, questions from council members?
So just to kind of summarize and reiterate here, my, my takeaways are regardless of our willingness to do, uh, to financially back this, um, we just might not be able to find the staffing to, to support the Parks Department if they were gonna operate this. And secondly, we don't even know if the equipment can run it in the summer without destroying the building, even if the equipment runs itself. Um, we've never put down summer ice, so we have to wait for the engineers to find out if that's even possible, regardless of the dollars we put at this. Is that correct?
I would say that's correct, Joel.
Yes, I, I only heard part of that, but yeah, I.
So. If we could keep the discussion here. So, uh, Mr. Todd, the schedule right now for the sports center is in, when will the ice go in for this summer? What's the plan? Plan?
The tentative plan right now is to host the 4H Ag Expo, uh, July 20-something, whatever Progress Days is. Um, as we're cleaning up their, their event, we'll turn the compressors on. Takes 10 days to make a sheet of ice. Uh, we've scheduled, we've got nine days to do it. Um, so we'll do some extra overtime work for that, um, to have it available for the August 6th, um, tryout date. Um, if we were to put it in early, uh, we would have to start, you know, early July, put the ice in, cover it, host this event, that's, um, already on the books, uncover it. There would probably be, I know I'm a call in front of me, but maybe a week of, of available ice prior to the tryouts. Um, so even if we were able to do, put in ice early, there still wouldn't be a ton of ice available, uh, to practice on until the field house is open.
Sorry, thank you. I don't see any other, uh, we will allow you one more opportunity to come and make comment, and then we will close the public comment period and move on with our agenda. So, ma'am? So ma'am, if you would please come so we can get this on the record. Again, yeah.
Okay. Sarah Miller, three nine eight four six Bubba's Avenue, Soldana. Um, I just had a question, uh, which was, I heard that it was expressed that with a second facility, there would be the possibility of having ice available in the summer. But I guess I don't understand how having two facilities alleviates the logistical problems of supporting ice operations of a potentially difficult, um, HVAC system, difficulties with the refrigeration, the staffing. So all of the logistical things don't seem like they would be solved by having two facilities. That's the question that I have. Thanks.
Well, two, two things with that though is the, uh, it gives us time to, to work with the engineers and to review their recommendations, replace equipment or make necessary upgrades to that, uh, by the time the field house would open. Uh, and my understanding with the staffing is, is a lot of that burden is with putting in the temporary flooring. And if we have the second facility, we don't have to do the temporary flooring. You don't need staff to oversee the logistics of that. You just leave the ice in place.
Okay. Thanks.
And there was another gentleman, one other gentleman, and then we will close it.
Okay. One, when you walk into the building, it's a hockey rink. Two, Kelly Connect, Dempsey, Ben Bokey, they're all double rinks, four hundred bucks a pop, a sheet. You guys are way off. Raise the price. We'll pay it. Let's not step over a dollar to get to a dime. You know, put the sheet in, I mean, year round, we'll pay it. It's gonna make you money. That's why they're in Anchorage, the valley, because they make money. You bring in, you know, high-class coaches, events all summer long. People love coming to the peninsula. People from the peninsula don't like going to Anchorage unless they're going to Costco. So, I mean, there has to be a compromise here because we're here year round. You know, the town does look beautiful in the summer. But we're here year round and our children are growing up here year round. You know, we know that, uh, you know, fishing is a big industry, tourism is a big industry, but they all go home. But they all come back every year too. There you go. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. If you would be, please be brief. Thank you.
I just, this is Tammy again. I just want to say, because we've kind of bounced all over the place. We are asking for four extra weeks of ice, only four, for this year. Do we someday want year-round ice? Yes. But for this season, we are asking for four extra weeks of ice. It is not going to deteriorate the building for four extra weeks of ice. That refrigeration system has been going and going and going. It's not dying on them. It's not doing anything specific. Yes, it needs to be fixed or replaced or whatever eventually, but it's working. And staffing is a money issue ultimately. And I truly believe that our great city of Soldana can fix that issue. And it's four weeks is all we're asking for right now. We're asking for four weeks. Okay. So we're not trying to fix every problem that Parks and Rec has with summer ice. We're asking for four weeks. So I just hope that that stays at the top of your, your thoughts because that's all we're asking for.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody who has come out and provided public comment this evening. With that, we will move on, on our agenda to assembly and legislative reports. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance? And I see Assembly Member Tyson Cox. Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Yes, Tyson Cox, uh, Assembly, Soldana seat. Um, I was just going to share a couple of items, um, from our last meeting. We had a couple of items introduced and we will be then voting on those on four sixteen. And that will be in Seward. So if anybody is showing up at the Borough Building at six P M. On the sixteenth for Assembly Drama, they will not get any that night. You will have to go to Seward. And so what those two items are is, one is a, um, code provision on how to issue, um, a trespass order from the borough. Um, it's not something we've had as a tool and we have found that it is something that we are feeling we might want as a tool in extreme cases, something illegal, threatening, significant disruptions, those kinds of things. Um, it is something that we are planning to, you know, will be voting on and discussing, uh, possibly putting into play. Another one was an amendment to our records requests and how folks, um, actually request those records and identifying some exempt records like nine-one-one items, um, deliberative process items and security items, things like that. And so some of that is, is because that code has not been updated since nineteen eighty-six. So we're doing, doesn't sound like a lot of like real fun stuff, but it is stuff that needs to be taken care of. And so we will be voting on those in Seward. I assume that there will be a way to call in if people do want to, to talk on those issues. Um, I was also, and I kind of got ahead of myself, I was also going to say, um, how impressed I've been with our, we had that, uh, the presentation earlier from Karts. I am a board member on Karts. It's a little plug for them is I've been pretty impressed with, um, how Ms. Schultz has taken over that. Uh, she started in, I believe, November as temporary. She has worked in the agency for between ten and twelve years. I don't know exactly. And she has just taken off and is, is making it her own. And we really appreciate that. She is very, she has a lot of good communication with the other agencies, which is super important. And I don't know if you caught it in her presentation, but being that everybody's talking now about the, um, the stool, the three-legged stool and how transportation is one of those legs. With that is Karts is one of those opportunities that we have to do that, to give transportation to our local community. And I don't know if you caught the matches, but she didn't really go into it, but there are some matches, depending on what the money spent for, that is ninety-ten split. That means if somebody were to give, you know, like five grand, that can make that five grand into about fifty thousand dollars, which is pretty amazing to be able to do that and have those kinds of splits. And it's not for everything. There are certain items. It just depends what it is. Some of their other splits are more like sixty-forty, but still a good, a, a good way to, uh, to spend money is to have it double. So anyways, back to, to our items. Um, the only other things I was going to say is just to remind folks that March thirty-first on Easter, the senior exemption is due for the borough. So if you are looking to turn in a senior exemption, that's something you should get in very, very, very soon, like by Friday. And then also anybody who is wanting to appeal their, their evaluations, that is by Monday, the five o'clock on Monday. Putting in an appeal does not mean necessarily that you need to come to the Board of Equalization. What it means is you might need a little bit of time to talk with the assessing department. They've been doing an excellent job actually in the last few years. Um, because I'm also on the Board of Equalization and the numbers they get that call in versus the numbers that we see at Board of Equalization, it's maybe a tenth, if that. It is amazing how, how many situations they resolve before they ever come to us. So it, it, what they're doing is much appreciated. So with that, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Assembly Member Cox. May Councilmember Carey?
Just want to be sure, a senior exemption, um, those who already have it, it's automatically renewed, I'm asking, as compared to, you're not saying that we all need to.
The answer to that is.
I had to look for.
The answer is yes.
Yes, it is.
Want to be sure that didn't go out.
I, I, I didn't know that because I don't have one yet.
You'll get there.
The answer is yes. Uh, yes, Councilmember.
The code provision for trespassing order, excuse me, I apologize for talking over you. Code provision for the trespassing order, was that in reference to the bill, the Borough Building itself? Or are you talking like Borough-wide trespassing order codes?
Good question. And sorry, I wasn't very descriptive on that. That is for Borough facilities. And so it would be directly with the Borough. It is not at that point with, um, officers. It is the Borough would put that out there. Um, what I've been told is it goes out with the court system in a way that if somebody does come on the facilities, is that's where then they would, they would have a, a recourse with the courts. And if they didn't go and take care of that, then that's when officers would be, would, would get involved. But it does not start with that. It does purely start with, at the Borough level of just saying, okay, we're asking you not to be here. And it becomes a legal document that they are not supposed to be on the premises.
Is that potentially problematic with it being a public building where we help hold meetings and stuff with access to the public?
Even better question. Um, yes, it does. And there's actually, um, there, there's terms in there that talk about that people need to be given a way to do that. So if they can't come to a certain facility, there still has to be access to anything there that's public, which we can do in a lot of other ways anymore. Is even for like a records request, you don't have to be there physically at the records building. You can do that online. You can do that over the phone. There are other options to be able to do that. And we're talking an extreme case here. We are not talking about the general public being banned from any facility. What we are talking about though is I think this is actually a benefit to the public because what I'm seeing right now, without something like that, we're actually closing more of the facilities off to the general public when we really only may have a problem with one or two persons out of the entire community. And yet we have to shut down certain parts of buildings because it, it's the, you know, it's the idea of one person ruins it for everyone type of idea. And so to be able to do these kinds of things eliminates some of that as a threat because that's really what it is, is when, when you have a staff members that are feeling uncomfortable, there needs to be a way to resolve that. So thank you.
Thank, thank you again.
Yep. Thanks. If I may, um, I will just ask, if you guys know what the Parks and Rec pays for summer, I have two boys coming back for summer. That could be very interested in something like.
If you would reach out to Mr. Todd and he will.
If he's listening, I might have a couple of boys ready for that. So thanks.
And I see no other members of the assembly or legislative branches, anybody on Zoom? Okay. Brings us down to public hearings. Our first item is Resolution twenty-two-four zero zero seven, forming a special assessment district for Whistle Hill Sewer utility improvements at an increased cost from that estimated in Resolution two thousand twenty-two oh two seven. May I have a motion to adopt? Thank you, Councilmember Carey. Second. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Uh, can I have a report from the administration, please?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Um, I have a statement. I just wanted to, um, kind of go through the historical, you know, where we've been and where we are. And then further questions, Director Zarneski can answer. Um, during the February twenty-eighth meeting, the, the council discussed the memo regarding the Whistle Hill S A D provided by Director Zarneski. The memo provided information regarding the status of the S A D and provided options to proceed. The four alternatives the council considered were, one, a resolution that increases funding for the formed Whistle Hill S A D. Two, a resolution forming a revised special assessment district based on the current cost estimated and changed circumstances. Three, a development agreement with the property owners and for a no project alternative. The city council discussed and ultimately passed a resolution to direct administration to submit the August eleventh, twenty-twenty-one authorization for a development agreement with the Crawl's in which the city will have a twenty-five percent cost share capped at a hundred thousand to the council for consideration. Soldana municipal code three sixteen one hundred G requires a second resolution come before the council. When the contract amount for improvements exceed the estimated cost of the improvement by more than ten percent, then no contract shall be entered into without further city council approval by resolution. The resolution before you tonight is the resolution referenced in Solda, in the code. To align with the motion made on February twenty-eighth, administration requests the resolution be failed. The development agreement is in process and will come before you at a later date.
Uh, thank you, City Manager Bauer. Uh, Mr. Zarneski, do you have anything further to add before we open up for public hearing?
Not at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. At, at this time, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing pound nine on your phone. And I see, uh, Mr. Brown, please come forth, state your name, address, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Fred Brown. Physical address is three one four eight seven Earl Drive, Daniels Lake, North Kenai. Although for twenty-seven years I've had an office here in Kenai, or pardon me, both Kenai and Soldana as a Realtor, gotta be careful on that. So I'd like to say in the years of, uh, Addy Camp and Whistle Hill being in operation, it's been six years. That whole facility has become a legend. It's become a landmark. It's become a destination, um, and an attraction. And, and I think it's by far the nicest dining restaurant on the Kenai Peninsula. I've been a regular there practically every single week since they opened six years ago. Been told I'm probably a pretty fair customer. So in that time though, I've seen the business, uh, grow to the point that they even host wine dinners with not just distributors of the different wines, but actual owners and winemakers from Napa Valley. That's pretty darn special for Soldana. Addy Camp, Whistle Hill and Soldana are all related, are pretty much one in the same to thousands of vehicles that travel mile ninety-three point five through Soldana every day. Uh, the night, the twenty-twenty-three September A A D T traffic, average daily traffic count is fourteen thousand two hundred vehicles a day. So you double, triple, quadruple that in the summer. Just again, the idea of how many people witness or nearby and, and see Addy Camp or Whistle Hill. With the tremendous growth in the development, Whistle Hill, and I'm sure both property taxes and real estate taxes have also seen dramatic increases, which is another win-win for both the city and the borough. There has been a mention made regarding the running of public utilities to the Crowe property that it, and this is hearsay, that it may set a precedent or be possibly an exception to the way the normal, uh, utilities are run. But in two thousand and six, I had sold the property where Maxi Storage is located and was involved in that construction. And it's not in the city limits. It's a stone's throw past Knight Drive and it's Ridgeway. But there was an exception made at that time for, and the developer was able to run city of Soldana services, public sewer and water to that property. Uh, the big concern, there was eighteen restrooms in that building and it just was not a feasible project to have a septic installation. So again, um, it's, it's not a apples-to-apples comparison, but I was hope that the council would reconsider. Uh, I would hope in closing that, uh, the city of Soldana actually is the strongest. They've got the reputation of the strongest pro-growth and development community on the peninsula. And I think you should be pretty darn proud of that. And I would only hope again that the council does reconsider, uh, what's on the floor tonight. And, uh, definitely there is a, uh, there's a heck of a need to get that sewer line run up the hill to Whistle Hill. Uh, it's a pretty drastic situation if the existing septic system did fail. Uh, not only just for loss of business, it, it's just something that I believe in today's world, it would make sense. It may not be a win-win financially to do it right now, but over a period of time, there's more development planned for that area. There's more, uh, taxes and more revenue, more sales taxes that will be collected in the future. And again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to testify on Resolution twenty-two-four zero zero seven?
Hello, Alieska Garrett, four eight six six nine Hazy Lane in Soldana. I sit before you tonight not only as a member of the Soldana workforce, I sit before you tonight not only as a member of the Soldatna workforce, but as a member of the community. I am saddened by the events that took place last council meeting, and I am disappointed in the shortsightedness of the people we elected to lead Soldatna. In 2022, the council unanimously voted to allocate roughly $500,000 in a special assessment district for the expansion of the sewer. This was a unanimous decision. Upon the project moving slowly due to high project costs, government protocols, and the need to remedy Whistle Hill's failing septic system, the administration for the city of Soldatna recommended to the city council to instead issue a development agreement with the same dollar amount that was already unanimously voted upon so the project could move forward. However, the council decided that the money was better suited elsewhere and agreed to a development agreement for 25% of the project cost capped at $100,000. The estimated project cost is over $800,000. To ask Henry and Mary if they want to pursue this option to cover the remaining balance of the project is astounding, especially after they have already invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into the city and into this development. At the last council meeting, a member of this body said, "We, the council, didn't ask them, the Krols, to develop this project, Whistle Hill." To that statement, I want to ask, did anyone ask Henry Ford to invent the first car? Did anyone ask the Wright Brothers to build the first airplane? No. Innovators don't need permission or approval to do great things and get things done. They see a need or a hole to fill, and they take it upon themselves to innovate and take a risk. Henry and Mary have invested a great deal of not only money and time, but their blood, sweat, and many, many tears into this community. They have made a sacrifice to do something wonderful for the city of Soldatna and to create a destination for not only travelers to Alaska, but for the locals who want to see Soldatna thrive. And it said that extending a sewer only benefits one business. That's incorrect. On Whistle Hill alone, a sewer extension would benefit four businesses currently, with the possible expansion of three more in the near future, plus several businesses and homes along Whistle Hill Loop. Whistle Hill alone employs 50 employees and supports those employees and their families. Last year, in wages between Addy Camp and Brew at 602, roughly $580,000 were issued. In city taxes, right under $40,000, and in guests serve a minimum of 50,000 guests a year. At the last council meeting, the word precedence was used multiple times, and the public perception of investing that large sum of money would come across to the residents of Soldatna and other developers. The only precedence that would be set by the council's decision to revoke the money they unanimously agreed on is this: Soldatna City Council does not support small business and is not a council of their word. All Henry and Mary, those here in support of myself, are asking is to maintain the dollar amount previously agreed upon within a development agreement. Please be the council that is supportive of local entrepreneurship and expansion.
Thank you for your testimony. I see no questions, so thank you. Anyone else who wishes to testify on Resolution 2024-007? Mrs. Kroll.
Mary Kroll, 36156 Tremolo Circle, Soldatna. In September of 2022, the council voted unanimously to appropriate a city match of $508,000 to the Whistle Hill Special Assessment District. Due to poor timing and a lack of competitive bidding, that SAD stalled. After discussing other options with city administration, your staff recommended transitioning the SAD to a development agreement. They also recommended allocating the approved city match of $508,000 to that development agreement. Henry and I would bear all remaining costs of the project without an assessment to the two benefited properties not owned by Whistle Hill. Put simply, there would be no assessment costs, no administrative costs to the city, no SAD rewrite and bid process, and no upfront construction costs to the city. In other words, we take full responsibility of extending the city utility infrastructure, and then we become new ratepayers. At the last council meeting, a discussion occurred to reduce the city match to cap at $100,000. I'm trying to understand why you approved unanimously a city match of $508,000 and then revoked it, when the cost savings to all involved is obvious. There was mention of setting precedent. I understand the desire to establish a pattern or justification for subsequent requests. However, progress and growth can't always occur within a fixed system with no flexibility, especially with projects that are creative, out of the box, and incorporate new technology and sustainability. In August 2023, Senator Lisa Mikowski visited Whistle Hill and posted a video on Facebook. She spoke about how Whistle Hill is a reminder of, and I quote, "Innovation and creativity of Alaskans who want to make a difference within their communities," end quote. That's why Whistle Hill exists. The comment was also made that we didn't ask you to build this. I'm not sure it's the council's responsibility to solicit or extend invitations to people who have a passion and vision to improve their community. I do believe, however, that it is the council's responsibility and in its best interest to support expansion and growth, as recommended by city administration. We are asking this council to reconsider a cost share of $100,000 and reallocate the original approved contribution of $508,000 to a development agreement. This does not benefit just one family. It benefits the 50 families we employ and who have very desirable and specific skill sets. It also benefits hundreds of guests and visitors we serve year round. In addition, it expands city infrastructure, which will ultimately encourage future development. Allow us to be that catalyst for growth. Finally, the council unanimously made a commitment to us by allocating $508,000 to extend its sewer line. I am asking you to keep your word. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else in the chambers? Dr. Kroll.
Good evening. I'm Henry Kroll, 36156 Tremolo Circle, here in the good old Soldatna. Thank you for hearing us yet again. We've been before the council numerous times, dating back to 2021 or maybe even before that. And I'll try to keep this brief, but I'm basically going to reiterate what was said probably more eloquently than I could ever say by my wife and daughter previously. This project, our septic system has failed. We have poor soils. It was something we didn't know about before. It actually failed before the restaurant even opened. We had to put in a new septic system. We looked at other options. We looked at a private system where we do a direct bore. We would bear the cost of that, and the cost of it alone was prohibitive. So we came to the council. We asked for support. And this was probably sometime early in 2021 or before. The business development agreement that was agreed upon at that time still would not be enough to make our project viable. So we came back and we formed a special assessment district through unanimous approval of this council. Not necessarily everyone sitting here tonight, but the council that was here at the time, unanimous approval for that special assessment district with an agreement to fund $508,000 and change. Through no fault other than our own, that project came in way over budget, way over. There was one bid. It was awful for everybody. And we met numerous times with the Public Works Department to try to come up with other solutions. And the one that was proposed by them was to come back with a development agreement with city support in the amount of $508,000. And that's what we thought was going to be approved at the council meeting a month ago. It was not. We are appreciative that the council agreed to offer some support, but it was a far cry from the $508,000 that was approved unanimously by this council previously. We are only asking that the city offer to help support this project with a business development agreement that will allow us to get the project going with support from the city for the $508,000 that was promised previously and agreed upon and allocated. So that's all I have. Thank you.
I see no questions. Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to testify on Resolution 2024-007?
Hello, Elon Kroll, 132 West Little Avenue, Soldatna, just right down the way. It was about eight years ago that my mom told me she was going to buy railcar number 602 and put a coffee shop inside. I was in college at the time and attributed it to empty nest syndrome. Whatever keeps you chugging. Fast forward to 2024, and Brew at 602 is now accompanied by Addy Camp, Thrash Fresh 365, Frames and Things, A Solar Farm, soon to be Ms. Elsie's, and various other businesses in the works. It grew in unimaginable ways. It brought my family together. My siblings and nearly all of our significant others work up there on Whistle Hill. Aside from attracting thousands of visitors every year, we serve our community year-round because we feel it's important to serve everyone, even during the hard winter months. With growth comes change. One of those major changes has been trying to get a sewer line extension from the city of Soldatna up to Whistle Hill. This increased demand has put a significant financial stress on Whistle Hill. You guys already know that. So when funds were unanimously approved by the council for it, an SAD, it felt like this crappy problem was at last being fixed. Pun intended. And then the funds were taken away, slowly down to 100,000, and it absolutely devastated Whistle Hill. I can't understand and maybe help me process why, how funds were approved, set aside, and then just as quickly taken away. Whistle Hill has been the leader in progressive action in our town. It is the example of small business success and entrepreneurial thinkers, and it perplexes me how the city doesn't see the value and potential of what we have to offer. Extending the sewer line is absolutely crucial for Whistle Hill's sustainability, growth, and future. I have had a front row view of watching my parents, who for years have put their heart, soul, and savings into trying to fix the sewer system. So you can imagine the immense disappointment we all felt when the decision to take away these crucial funds happened. This is our opportunity to be on the right side of growth, not just for one family, but for all the employees who work up there, the thousands of guests who visit, and for the future of Soldatna. It's been said that what we're building up there is something that the city didn't ask for, but all we've done is for this community and for the city. I'm asking, as a daughter who chose to come back here to buy her home and establish roots in this small town, to please reconsider keeping your promise to Whistle Hill, to be on the right side of growth. I want to be able to grow up. I want my kids to grow up knowing that we have a community and a council who encourages progressiveness. I'm pleading with you to remember the promise that was made and the dire nature of what taking this money away could do to Whistle Hill. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else in the chambers that would wish to testify? Madam Clerk, is there any remote attendees wishing to speak? Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing and bring this back for the council. This is Resolution 2024-007, forming a special assessment district for the Whistle Hill improvement at increased cost from estimated in Resolution 2022-027. Council comments? Councilmember Hutchins.
Yes, my question is, we've got the Resolution 2024-007 that has to be denied before we can go ahead with a development agreement. Is that correct?
City Manager Bauer?
Yes, that is correct. It's, as stated in the code, whenever the cost goes over, we have to bring back a resolution to you. So to align with the council's previous action at the last meeting, then this needs to be failed, and basically then the SAD goes away. The development agreement stays in play.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments from council members?
Ms. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Chilson.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank the Kroll family and associates for coming out and speaking again tonight. We hear you, and I know this is a very passionate issue. And I thank you for all the work that you've put into building that wonderful asset for our community. We would love to see it continue to grow. I voiced a lot of my opinion on this in the last meeting, and it's a very tough position. And I've, one of the recurring comments I heard tonight is that we're going back on our word or taking away the funds. It's an interesting situation because we had made the intent clear to provide at a certain level under the SAD framework. But my understanding is basically that came apart due to costs and was brought back before the council. And at that point in time, it was our responsibility as a council to make a decision as far as how we would like to proceed with this. And there's a number of different mechanisms available. And I heard the question tonight as far as why that number was changing when we were basically going back to the drawing board and having to make a decision about how to go about this moving forward from fresh start. And there's just a number of factors that changed. And I think my main concern that I voiced at the last meeting, I think this might have been echoed by other council members, is costs that we have upcoming that would be drawn out of the utility fund. So one of the biggest things that's changed since this was first approved is the collapse of our outflow pipe. That's a very, very expensive project that we have to bear as a city. And then we also have other new capital projects that are coming up that we have to fund out of that. So that puts us in an interesting position where if, you know, we had our druthers and money wasn't an issue, absolutely, we'd love to fully fund this at the original target and potentially more. But we also have to recognize that any allocation of money that we provide out of this is coming solely out of the utility fund, and that results in rate increases for our Soldatna residents. And we have to balance that. So that is why I was strongly advocating at the last meeting to try to find some kind of compromise. And I'm so hopeful that we can. And what I proposed was splitting the difference between the $100,000 amount that was proposed as well as the $508,000 amount and going somewhere right on the middle of $304,000. So I haven't given up on that. I still want to try to support you at an additional level higher than the $100,000 mark. But I hope that we can find compromise and some concession recognition that there are additional financial burdens that this fund has to bear that directly affect all residents of the city of Soldatna. And we have to take that into consideration. So I will be voting no on this resolution tonight, just because we do have to deny this to move forward with any exploration of a development agreement, whatever that final amount may be. But when that development agreement does come back before us, it is my intent to hopefully make a motion to amend that again and bring back that $304,000 amount, which would be a compromise in the middle. And I would like to see that move. So that's where I'm at tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Carey.
Thank you. To the administration, what happens if we approve this?
Then the SAD, excuse me, SAD is still in play. However, we would really need to go back to our attorney who has spoken, who has provided information. And it was in the previous memo regarding the way the properties have changed and the parcels have changed, because it isn't the same SAD that we started with, the parcel configuration that we started with. So we would have to go back to the attorney for further guidance and how we could actually move that forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blackler.
I apologize if I keep doing that. I'm just sitting around living. Do you mean by parcel allocation, the owners of each parcel, not the boundaries or anything like that? Or both?
Madam. Excuse me.
Both, I'm both. Some of the parcels have changed, and then the Krols have greater ownership previously.
That would mean, the reason why we need to go back is that the agreement wouldn't stand as it is because it's not the original agreement.
Right. There are concerns by the attorney regarding that.
Correct.
And Madam Vice Mayor, may I ask further information regarding your question? In addition, if you were to pass this resolution, then we would bring back further legislation, and it would be an ordinance increasing to the construction cost.
Yes, Councilmember Chilson.
I just wanted to clarify again. A no vote on this tonight is not because I don't support providing some form of support to sewer extension for the Krols. Um, I, I do strongly support that, and I want to see some amount given just in the form of a, uh, development agreement that we'll see come back to us. So please don't take the no vote as I, I don't support you, I, I really do, and I want to try to find some compromise at the next meeting where we can get above that hundred thousand dollar mark and split the difference. So that's, that's my personal goal. So, thank you.
Um, just so I can offer a few comments before I call for the vote. Should we pass this resolution, the administration would be definitely conflicted because they would have a special assessment district for the property, and they would also have a development agreement for the property. And so, you know, which, which, how am I supposed to go? So, um, that, that would be definitely a conflicting message for, for the administration should, should we do that. I appreciate all, all the public testimony that we've received and the, the time and the years that have been spent by both the property owners of Whistle Hill as well as the administration to try to find, come up with a, a, a resolution to this issue. So with that, I would call for the vote.
Chilson?
No.
Whackler?
No.
Nelson?
No.
Hutchings?
No.
Carrie?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Five no.
Reverse that.
Yes, thank you.
Five no.
Um, on a vote of one yes, five no, resolution twenty twenty four zero zero seven fails. The administration will be working with the developers of Whistle Hill on the development agreement. Um, and that will be back before the council, I suspect, at a future meeting. Brings us to the next item on the agenda, ordinances. We have ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero six, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by ten thousand dollars in the general fund for a donation received from Debbie McCarthy. May I have a motion to enact? Thank you, Councilmember Hutchings and Councilmember Nelson. Report from the administration, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. The, um, we are very grateful for this donation, and the funding will be used for a library needs assessment. And if there are questions about the needs assessment, our librarian is here to answer that.
Uh, thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? I see no one here in chambers. Uh, Madam Clerk, is there any remote attendees wishing to speak? Uh, seeing none, uh, the item is now back before the council. Any council member comments? I would just say thank you, uh, Ms. McCarthy for this donation to our library. Can I have the vote, please?
Whackler?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
On a vote of six to nothing, ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero six passes the council. Um, moving on, we have new business, and those are all consent agenda items. Did I? Uh, oh, sorry, skipped over that. I'm sorry, ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero zero seven, increasing estimated revenue and appropriations by twenty four thousand four hundred ninety-eight in the general fund for the purchase of a replacement motor. May I have motion to enact?
I'll move to enact ordinance twenty twenty four zero zero seven.
Thank you, Councilmember Chilson and Ms. Hutchings. Report from the administration.
Thank you. Um, when the maintenance department, they were widening the streets, the motor on the trackless unit failed, and this is the cost to replace the motor and, um, the funding to do so.
Thank you. Are there any, many in the audience wishing to testify on this ordinance? Any remote attendees? Seeing none, this is now back before the council. Council comments? Um, I had a question about the length of time that it takes to purchase this. It's going to be a year before we're going to be able to get this replaced? Madam manager or Mr. Cornelius?
Yeah, I, in reading the, um, memo from our maintenance department manager, it does state, state next year. I don't have, if you have further information, Kyle.
Uh, thank you, uh, City Manager Bauer through the mayor, uh, Vice Mayor. Um, we, we don't have an exact date, um, but I do know that the exact amount of the purchase price is the ordinance, so we'll be doing the swap in-house. Um, that'll take a little extra time. Um, but as noted in the memo, um, council approved the purchase of a new trackless in the FY twenty five budget. So, um, they're likely to, um, be ready for next fall. So there is a bit of a lead time.
Just a bit. So seeing no additional comments or questions from the council, call for the vote.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Uh, thank you. Uh, final vote is six to nothing on ordinance twenty twenty four zero zero seven, and I apologize for skipping over that. Now we're moving on through lots of, next meeting, there will be lots of ordinances and resolutions. Brings us down to mayor council reports, and I don't know if Mayor Whitney, did you want to give a report? Are you sleeping?
Not yet, but the weather is beautiful. It's about, uh, seventy degrees and, uh, should be about eighty-five tomorrow. I may not come back.
Um, thank, thank you for that, that report. We, um, sitting as the, uh, Vice Mayor, Acting Mayor right now, I would like to, uh, note that, uh, here a week or so ago, both the mayor, myself, and the city manager, we did take a trip to Washington DC for National League of Cities. We were able to have meetings with all the members of our congressional delegation, um, as well as a wonderful meeting with USDA, uh, Rural Development Administration, where we were able to talk about the Riverfront Development Project. Um, and we were also able to discuss with both the delegation, um, and RDA, both the Riverfront Development Plan as well as, uh, legislative priorities and issues that we have here in Soldatna. Uh, we were, we were well received and, um, got lots of compliments from the administration as well as our delegation on the Riverfront Development Plan, and they are excited to see this unfold, unfold in the next twenty years as it moves forward. Um, and I would also note, you can put on your calendars, April twenty fifth, Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District will be having its industry, uh, industry forum at the Soldatna Sports Center. Um, and that is always a good event to go and catch up on with what's going on here in town. So with that, I will go down to council reports, boards and commissions. Mr. Chilson, March sixth, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. Um, Planning and Zoning Commission met, um, had a number of things on the agenda. Uh, much of discussion that evening was focused on, um, code relating to fences. Um, the, uh, commission reviewed resolution PZ twenty twenty three zero two five, which would recommend a number of code changes uh, that would correct a number of inconsistencies between, uh, definitions of fencing, uh, as they are structured between different zones. Uh, would also standardize the height requirements of decorative fencing, do a number of things like removing requirements for, uh, removing the requirements that fences cannot be used along streets in some situations, uh, defining where barbed wire can and cannot be used within commercial districts. Uh, this would not affect residential districts. This is mostly focusing on commercial districts. And then additionally, um, we got a year-end report from the, uh, P and Z, uh, to the P and Z by, uh, the planning department staff um, on just all the different activities they've been doing the last couple of years, uh, and ending in twenty twenty-three. And it was really, uh, kind of eye-opening to see just how much they're doing there. They, they addressed eleven plat reviews, uh, they did seven code amendments, uh, four conditional use permits, a number of other different things. But anyway, uh, total activities for last year was twenty-nine, and the year prior to that was fifteen. So it was a substantially busier year for our Planning and Zoning Commission. I just like to, um, I'm not sure if any of them are listening to this meeting, but I'd like to say thank you to all the work they put into there. I think a lot of our commissioners are kind of the, uh, undersung heroes for the city in that they do a lot of the heavy lifting for us, uh, before it has to get to the council. So I'm just very appreciative of what they do. Additionally, there is a, um, comprehensive report on short-term rental, uh, trends, uh, within the city limits. Um, that was very, very interesting to, uh, see. John and his department put together a lot of good information on the status of short-term rentals within the city of Soldatna and just within the last year or so, the, um, main takeaway is there's been a significant uptick in the, uh, number of non-owner occupy units being used for short-term rentals. And this is something that I've, I've voiced on this council for, uh, a number of years now that I have strong concerns about with, uh, the trend of, of housing being converted for short-term rental use. Uh, I think it's a very negative impact on our community. We're seeing this nationwide and in our state, especially in touristy areas. And, um, you know, we've discussed putting, uh, I think we, a couple of years back, we had some consideration on the council about imposing density limits on, on, uh, short-term rental units within the city, and I'd proposed limiting that, and that was shot down. And we've also reviewed, uh, accessory dwelling units, and, uh, I think I had an amendment or code that I proposed following up on that to restrict those from short-term rental units that failed as well. And I, I, I don't intend to give up on that. I hope we, as a council, don't lose sight of the impacts that short-term rentals are having on our residents. And, um, uh, I think that, that, uh, report is to be addressed in the city manager's section later, but, um, just be aware that it, it hurts people that live here in this community if it's not controlled. So that's something we shouldn't lose sight of. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Chilson. And did you find your notes from Parks and Rec?
I have not found my report I wrote up for Parks and Rec. I swear I did it, but if I find it, I'll be happy to present it on in the future.
We refer that to the April meeting to hear your report on the March seventh, Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Uh, Mr. Zarneski, the K-PED meeting from March twenty-first.
Uh, thank you. So as, um, as, uh, you noted, Ms. Vice Mayor, that, um, Industry Outlook Forum is coming up, and you should all have received one of these in your boxes. Uh, scan the QR code, you can register, um, doesn't cost you anything. The theme this year is workforce development, and we'll be touching on, uh, additionally, the, um, the important components that, uh, that really support it, including, uh, one of the things that was talked about today, transportation, uh, childcare, and of course, housing. So, uh, those elements will all be, uh, part of the conversation. Uh, one of the other interesting things that, uh, K-PED just launched is a three-part meet and greet series designed to connect our local businesses with, um, different experts within their different fields, and, uh, it's geared around, uh, making them available in a more, uh, or I should say a less formal way, uh, for folks to come and greet, greet these people, meet, ask questions, get familiar with the, the folks in our community that provide these services. So the first one was held on March twenty-two, uh, at the Kenai River Brewery. And, uh, in that one, it was, uh, local lenders were providing information on finance and funding programs. And there'll be a couple others announced here as we go forward. Um, work continues on the Mariculture Industry Development. Uh, outreach events are being planned in and around Catch Mac Bay. K-PED is currently working with tribal and rural leaders to identify Mariculture opportunities. Um, they're looking at one-on-one meetings, uh, with investors and innovators and continuing to do that. And, uh, Mariculture will be one of the featured presentations at the Industry Outlook Forum. Let's see. Uh, K-PED is considering hiring a part-time administrative position to help meet the day-to-day demand for services and information. As, as you know, um, with the change in, um, leadership, um, we essentially lost a, lost a body. We lost an important body. And, um, so this idea of hiring a part-time administrator to help ease the flow of, of work here is, is one of the things that's, uh, now being considered. And then last, uh, Executive Director Cassidy Cameron has started a new monthly informational newsletters called the Board Conduit. It's, uh, designed to keep us board members updated on K-PED happenings, uh, in, in particular between our, our meetings. Um, so, uh, it's an effort in this instance to keep the information going, have, have good communication, coordination with board, and keep us all informed. And that's all I have.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Zarneski. And, uh, March twenty-first, the airport commission met, and we got updates on the, how the snow rule went last winter and, uh, what's going on with, uh, leases. I think the most interesting thing that came up was, um, FA has started a land use compliance audit for the airport, and that is underway at this time. And I, that's kind of the highlights. I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Cornelius? Okay. So, um, that is it for reports and comments. Uh, city manager's report. City Manager Bauer?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Um, first, I'd like to touch on the short-term rental report that, um, Councilmember Chilson referenced in the packet. And Director Zarneski is here to speak to it, and then I have an addition on to that, and it's regarding our, our lodging tax.
Thank you. So, uh, there are a couple of things, um, on this report that I, I wanted to share with you, and as, uh, Councilmember Chilson noted, that the number of short-term rentals permits issued last year did, did double, just about double. But the purpose of this report is, is, um, for a number of reasons, and, and the first one is we wanted to establish some baseline data for you. And so our goal is to, uh, present to you an annual report so you can see what's, what's trending when short-term rentals over the course of the year. So, um, you should be seeing these every year, and this, uh, this report does cover, uh, the calendar year twenty-three. Uh, there is some interesting information in here. We did have a few, uh, in fact, there were eight listings that are no longer active. So we do see the, the, you know, things come and go within this, and, and some people realize after they get into it that it, it's a lot of work, or, um, they just, you know, it's not something that interests them, and they end up dropping out of the, of the pool. And we did see, as I mentioned, twenty-three new permits, so that's a net gain of fifteen, uh, short-term rentals listed across all platforms. Uh, another thing that's, uh, somewhat interesting is that we are beginning to see, uh, our local hotels advertising on short-term rental, uh, uh, platforms. And the idea is to, uh, try to fill their, their nights as best they can. So they've, they've gone to advertising on this. So we've seen a, an increase in the number of activities that are occurring within the commercial district that don't require a permit uh, from us. They still have to follow the same standards, but a permit's not required within the commercial district. So we're seeing that happening. There is a map provided for you on page seventy-two of your packet, which shows the location. Um, it also shows the, um, the rentals by, by zoning district, and, uh, by far the, most of the district, or most of the short-term rentals are occurring in the single-family, two-family zoning district, and those do require, uh, permits. Um, but the ones, as I noted, in the commercial district and limited commercial do not. The, uh, the units themselves are scattered, uh, across the city. There's a number around the river, but there's also a good, uh, group of them, a high density of them in our, uh, in our core part of, of the community, uh, near the hospital in our residential districts. Um, so it's, it's, it's spread, it's spread. So it's 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 spread. It's spread around. And I honestly expected to see more on the river. And there are there are a substantial number, but I was surprised by the number of folks that are starting short term rentals within the the higher density part of our city itself. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Seeing no questions, continue on.
Thank you. Along with that, as you know, the lodging tax ordinance passed with the implementation date of January 1st, 2025. Had several meetings with the borough and regarding collection of the tax and haven't come to a resolution. So because we do need to implement, we are we internally met on how we're going to implement while continuing conversations with the borough. Part of what was very helpful and that I'm thankful for is John's department and the records that they've kept because those these short term rentals will be our contacts right off the bat. So what we're starting with is developing a page on our website that will have all of the information regarding lodging tax and and short term rentals, all of it put together, including the hotels, where a person who I'm going to use a short term rental as an example, a short term rental. They have already received their permit from planning and then they will receive their certificate, their registration certificate from the city. And they our end goal is to be able to do all of this online. So we're developing that page and there'll be a notice to go out right away. Basically, at this time, it'll be save the date, more information to follow, but you will need to come in and get your certificate of registration. So that has started, that process has started and will continue on. And like I said, I mean, to continue the discussions with the borough because of what state statute language states that they should be collecting. So we'll continue that. At this time, the finance department is working on a method to collect the tax until we can get it worked out with the borough. Because like I said, we do need to implement January 1st. That is what the code says. So we're moving forward with that. The second report we've already spoken about, and that would be the summer ice. And I do mean it when I said it is my desire to have year round ice. I do realize the workload for that. I think the community can benefit from it. When we were in Washington DC, we met with Mayor, excuse me, Congresswoman Petola. And we taught, we of course thanked her for the funding for the field house, which has been approved. And has been, it's in law now, the million dollars. But part of, you know, what we talked about is, and I do believe this with the other states and other areas of our state, there is more time and opportunity for to practice the sports. So I think of it as the more time that you have in your sport, the greater opportunity for even colors college scholarships. And I could see hockey being one of those as well. So why not have the scholarships come from our facility or the practice time for the scholarships for our facility? So I really do believe in year round ice and I and then the benefit to the community. As I stated, we're just not quite ready, but we will get there. Going back to Washington DC, the Vice Mayor expanded on it and I'm sure we'll continue to provide information. Really good meetings with our delegation and with USDA. And, you know, some of the things that we're going hurdles that we're going to have to jump through regarding the CDS funding for the field house is American made. Have I said that right? By America. Thank you. By America clause in that. And we'll work with USDA. There are some provisions for waivers should we need them, but we'll work with them to make sure that we're in compliance. The, as stated, the riverfront redevelopment project plan, we gave brought plans with us, was very, very well received. And I do think of that as, you know, that outside the box thinking for our community. And it is transformative thinking for our community. The CDS requests have been submitted for the FY 25 budget and we'll see how those are received. We, what happens is that we submit them basically into a portal. Actually, it is our federal assistance that we received this year. They had submitted it. And it's our understanding that then Senator Murkowski and Congresswoman Petola, they meet and they decide between them which ones they will, each one of them will submit. And so I I do, I don't believe very many states in the United States have that working relationship to make sure that our requests get submitted. I think that's all I have at this time unless you have questions.
Any questions for the city manager?
One follow up question. So
Yes.
On the note about the the issues we're dealing with the borough and their refusal to collect sales tax for lodging. My understanding is Seward already has this. Have they gone a similar path of what we're exploring to collect locally within the municipality itself? Or is the borough collecting for them?
The borough is not collecting from them. I do believe that at some point in time, the discussion was had with the borough and this and Seward decided they needed to move ahead and just did it.
Got it.
So, yeah, similar discussions are going on, but Seward does collect.
Interesting. Thank you.
Any other additional questions for the city manager? Thank you for your report. That brings us down to item 11, public comments. Are there any members we I see? We have Tyson Cox, who's a member of the public who wishes to have comment. You have three minutes.
Tyson Cox, 237 West Reedout. First off, I wanted to, I heard Ms. Bauer talking about the the riverfront development project. I am a huge supporter of that. I I'm happy to see some things moving forward with that. The other thing I was going to talk a little bit about was I do also appreciate the short term rental report. That was a very good report done. I I appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions, not ones I necessarily necessarily need answered at the moment. But some of them are on the permitting are some of these ones, do we? Are we adding some because more people are hearing about it, knowing they should have a permit? Because to be honest with you, I didn't know there was a permit required until this meeting. So to know that is, I think, an important thing, too, is is more information getting out to people and some of these already existed? Or do we have the data that says, no, these are brand new? Another one would be is are all of these short term rentals always short term rentals? Because like I have a facility that I may be turning, I haven't done it yet as a short term rental, but we are looking at using it as one. But it's what you consider a midterm rental during the winter, which means traveling nurses, doctors, things like that, use them for several months at a time, which is not the same thing as a as a short term rental. So, you know, I guess I'm assuming you have on, and I didn't look at it recently, but I'm assuming it says something to the effect of if it's over 14 days or something to that effect, that you do it as a short term rental, it's considered a short term rental. So I mean, there is a definition between what are we using them for? And the whole reason I'm I'm getting to the point here is Mr. Chulson had brought up the idea of possibly having some restrictions on short term rentals. And I just I caution somewhat against that only because what I can foresee happening is is it's not very hard for people to have short term rentals just outside of the city. And so with the idea of putting forward a bed tax that we're trying to get some extra sales tax off of these units, if they're just going to push outside of the city, you've you've just eliminated the reason of having a bed tax. And so it's just something to consider when you're looking at that is we don't have the same boundary issues that Homer or Seward may have. And so if they come forward with something like that, I could really see the reason in doing that. But as far as us as a community, I don't know if we'll see the same benefit as those communities in putting some of those restrictions on there, just because I think all we'll do is take our sales tax away. They will still come to Sadana to do other things and be taxed on that. But as far as the the stay, all they'll do is push it just outside the limits. We have a very small footprint, which we all know. And those limits would not be hard to go just slightly out to K Beach or to, you know, just in the Ridgeway area or even Mackey Lake area, something like that, where you're just outside of city limits. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Is there anyone else in chambers or on Zoom that would like to provide any public comment? Seeing none, that we will close the public comment period. And brings us down to Councilmember comments and we will start with Councilmember Whackler.
I have no comment today.
Thank you. Councilmember Cassidy.
I'll keep it short because I'm hungry. So I hope you all are enjoying what seems like the start of spring. I know, you know, a few weeks ago, we were all like, oh, no, we have a few more winters to go through first before we see the sun above 40 degrees. But hopefully, the weather keeps doing what it's doing and we can enjoy a real summer this year as opposed to last year. Just some some smaller things I could bring up. In terms of of the Sohigh Community, NHS through the school is putting on a blood drive soon. I wish I had the exact date memorized, but I don't. It'll be sometime within the next month and a half. So at the next meeting, I can get the date in for that one. I do know, though, that in two days, yes, two days from now, the school is hosting a what they're calling Uganda Game Day, again through NHS. And the idea behind this is that we apparently, I missed this bit last year, have a sister school in Uganda that we are raising money for. And this is a relatively new thing as of last year. And it's not, it's not brought up a ton yet, again, because this is a new thing. But the National Honor Society is really pushing for more support. And they actually did a presentation on it earlier today. Basically, because Friday is an early release for the high schoolers, that extra hour and a half where the soccer players, the track runners, the softball and baseball players, they'll be at the school. They can put in a few dollars and then we'll have a bunch of competitions, games, you know, just recreational activities for the kids and there'll be snacks they can buy too. And this money will be put in an account and then sent over to this school in Uganda in order to help them with the costs of actually having students paying for staff, paying for their resources. There's a bunch of things. But in the long run, the goal of this is to help the enrollment. Because according to the people that I know who have been to several African countries, enrollment in elementary schools is actually fairly common there, private elementary schools. But then when you hit high school and these kids are they able to get a job or, you know, go elsewhere, do other things, enrollment drops severely. And eliminating costs for parents sending these kids to school and getting an education will hopefully, if their numbers are right, will take this drop in enrollment down. So there'll be, you know, more kids enrolled in their system, which I think is is a great thing. And I get to play dodgeball. So that'd be great, too. Yeah. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cassidy. Councilmember Hutchins.
No comment.
Okay. And Councilmember Carey.
I wasn't here, but I'm told that one of the primary things that pushed the vote on statehood was the appreciation of education and the need that the students, the young people, the children would have a good education in Alaska. Watching the funding for education, from my standpoint, continues to be done very irresponsibly. I'm 19 years out of retiring as a teacher, but I spent 30 years doing it. And I've got to tell you, this is a real tough time. When teachers don't know who's going to be rehired or who's going to retain their job. I think it does not speak very well in terms of respect for education to put people through this continually, to ask people to stay up here when they don't know if they'll even have a job. Again, as the discussion of pink slips every spring goes by. You know, this time I love the increase in the amount of light during this time. But I also know for those in the schools, it's a very difficult time period in terms of to feel that they are appreciated, that what they do is valid. The Kennapolis Borough because of its size is very unique. We are really caught in the middle. We have so many different educational units. We cover such a large area that we are caught and I think the most, the greatest disadvantage of any major school district in the state because of what we have tried to do and what we have done. We treat the educators from a standpoint of yo yos. Okay, we say we love you and you're important and then we we do all this kind of stuff of whether or not we even going to have you around. It is very difficult to develop curriculum as we just talked about the sports center. If you don't have staff there, what can you do in terms of ice? What can you do in classrooms if you don't know if you're going to have teachers? Or are you just going to hope that you can have those that'll accept the least amount of money from within this country because of the lack of retirement and other type of things? And so I'm very aware of the human impact of the way this state treats education, which is a statement of how they value our children. I know that trouble that teachers and educators have very much affects the the staff members. It affects the students. There's so much discussion now about mental health and young people. I believe when you devalue education, it increases mental health issues for those individuals, those students who are trying to to gain from education and and respect it. I want to say I really respect the people in our schools. I respect every teacher. I respect the staff members. I expect the, I respect the administrators. And I just wish that as a state, we could do a decent job of providing the funding that's necessary so that the educators on all levels can do their job as well. And I love this state.
Thank you, Councilmember Gary. Councilmember Nelson.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
And Councilman Chulson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Circling back to the long discussion we had tonight about summer ice at Sports Center. I just wanted to add one final note on that. I know I probably came across science kind of a negative member here on the body. My intent was not to steer us away from supporting summer ice this summer. I I just want to make it clear on the record that I do fully support our hockey community and I would love to see summer ice if we can all make it happen. I was just merely trying to help explain the difficulties that we are dealing with as a city and and making that possible. And I would continue to encourage staff to explore any way that they might be able to make that happen this summer. And maybe we'll get lucky and we can make something happen to support that community. But that that's where I'm at right now on this. Additionally, this last week, Council Councilman Whackler and myself met with city staff and had our kickoff meeting for planning the I Voted sticker art contest that we're going to be establishing as a city this coming year. A lot of exciting movement with that. We're getting the the pieces in place to support that and we'll hopefully have that ready to officially launch and and have all the information people have need of to participate in that here shortly. And then lastly, can we just talk about the consent agenda tonight? I think that one might have been a record on length. So wow. Other than that, ready for spring, more sunshine, less snow. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilman Chulson. Just remember the April 10th meeting will be long because those consent items will be on the agenda April 10. There is no executive session for this evening. Upcoming meetings include April 3rd Planning Zoning Commission meeting, 5:30 here in council chambers. And then the next regular council meeting will be April 10th at 6:00 PM with seeing no further business. He did. Do you want to make any additional comments? He's he commented already. Did you want to add anything?
Do I want to add anything? Just thank you, Vice Mayor Parker, for making the report on Washington DC. And City Manager, thank you for doing that.
Yes, and I were glad that you can hear again. So with nothing else to come before the council, the meeting is adjourned at 8:23 PM. I I deferred to him early, early on. I, I deferred to him early, early on. Give it to the clerk.